The 3:30 p.m. meeting of the Bakersfield City Council is now in session.
Good evening. It's my pleasure to call to order the 3:30 City Council meeting of March 3rd, 2021. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Go.
Here.
Vice Mayor Weir.
Here.
Councilmembers Arias.
Here.
Gonzalez.
Here.
Smith.
I'm here.
Freeman.
Here.
Gray.
Here.
And Parlier.
Here.
Thank you. On March 4th, Governor Newsom declared a state of emergency in California due to the threat of COVID-19. The governor also passed several executive orders, including the suspension of some of the components of the Brown Act related to public meetings like this. Therefore, seating in the chamber is limited. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Public statements.
This meeting has limited public access. Therefore, public comments were encouraged to be made through -- made to the city clerk through email or by phone call. If you're here in person to make a public statement, please fill out a public speaker card and give it to the city clerk. All statements are given a three-minute time limit, 15 minutes per topic. If you have written comments that are longer than your verbal statement, please give those to the clerk, who will give copies to the council. If you're here to speak on a workshop item, we ask that you speak after staff's presentation on that matter. We're very interested and concerned with your issues. However, due to the public notice requirement of the Brown Act, council can't take action when an item isn't on the agenda. The council can, however, refer your matter to the committee or request that staff contact you. Please avoid any behavior that disrupts the meeting, such as repetitive statements, going off-topic, shouting, surpassing the three-minute time limit. Madam Clerk, do we have any public speakers?
Mayor Go, we've received three public speaker cards, all speaking on a single subject, Get bus changes.
Thank you. Go ahead and call the first public speaker, please.
Nicholas Blanchard.
Good afternoon, Mayor Go.
Good afternoon. Please introduce yourself.
My name is Nicholas.
And would you raise the microphone, please? Thank you.
My name is Nicholas Blanchard, and I represent Wheels for Bakersfield. It's a local foundation that we help individuals in the wheelchairs. But we're here to talk about the hardships that the changes of the Get Bus is going to make for them. Karen King will be here, I guess, at the 5:30 meeting discussing the changes that she's going to present. The hardships that are going to be coming is schools are opening, the malls are open, restaurants are open, and the downtown is open. But there's not enough bus service, and the changes are going to affect these individuals that are in the mobile devices. The changes, the charges on their chairs won't last that long, so they can't move around the city without public transportation. And that it being ending at 7:00 p.m., they have to be able to get on these buses by 5:30. Most of their appointments won't allow them to get to the buses on time. The buses are crowded, and they pass them by, and they have to wait for the next bus, if that bus is available. So they're going to get stranded if these changes go into effect. More research should be done before the changes can be considered. The buses should run until 11 o'clock, like they were before. Other cities are opening up. Why can't Bakersfield? This is a struggle for them to get around every day. And if they can't get your help to get around town and to stop these changes, when it comes time for the vote for the next council, these are your constituents. They'll vote for somebody else. I have a petition that I had a lot of the people in the wheelchairs sign, and I'd like to present this to you, so that you can see there is a concern to the individuals who need this service. And it's not just them. It's both of Bakersfield needs to get around. They're not going to be able to get home from work or go to school. So I'd like to submit this to you, and you can look at it as your leisure.
Thank you, Mr. Blanchard. You can give that to the city clerk, please. And Madam Clerk, would you please call the next speaker?
Tanner Thompson.
Welcome, and please introduce yourself.
Hey, good evening. You all probably know me. I am Mrs. Johnson. I am, um, very tired because I am unable to visit my family because of the bus route. They all dropped around, um, since 3:00 or 7:00. So, um, there is no way for me to get home if I'm helping a family. I'm with my family about, um, 6:00. Hey, the only strength that I have that will bring my power equipment, I can't go. I don't go. I can't because they don't have the power to put us, um, disabled. And then I have a party that I need to get to about 5:00 o'clock. And by the time I get out of my party, I don't have a way to get home. So what I'm asking you guys is how the bus goes back so we can live our everything's all without worrying about the bus though.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. Your time is up, and thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk, next speaker, please.
Dustin Combs.
Hello. My name is Dustin Combs, and I would like to comment about the present bus hours. It will greatly limit my opportunities to get around town, to do things, you know, so it will directly impact me. Also, just as an example, originally, we were asked to come to the 5:30 meeting and comment, but if we did stay here, we wouldn't be able to get home because, you know, the buses are running, you know, are running with less time for us to move around and do things. So, you know, I just want to say, as one of your constituents and someone who does use these services, they are very important to me and will have a great impact on me and all of my acquaintances and friends. And if I am not supported, if I am not heard by this council, then I will take the one political action I can, and I will not support members of this council if I do not feel supported, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Combs. Madam Clerk, next speaker, please, or are there any others? I don't have any more cards.
Hi. I'm so sorry, Julie. I just was a little late. Rudi Patel.
It's on the DPC Community Collaborative, so if it's later, I can come later to or speak on that agenda item.
This would be the appropriate time to speak. Please introduce yourself and welcome.
Hi, my name is Rudi Patel. You all know me. Understanding the speakers that came before me, you understand that all of you have the power to fix these sorts of issues, specifically public transportation. You know anyone with common sense and half a [bleep] brain would know that the fossil fuel industry in Kern County has invested millions of dollars in killing public transportation in Kern County to keep community members reliant on cars. And as every situation that occurs here in Bakersfield, Kern County, and across the nation, of course, it hurts the most marginalized communities, Black, Indigenous, Latinx, disabled, and other community members, things that none of you have to go through. And you cast these votes and refuse to speak out against constant injustices that happen in Bakersfield, knowing that this has a very direct impact on community members in Bakersfield. And it's not that just, well, we didn't do [bleep] thing today so I can feel good about myself when I go to bed. It's the fact that you have the power at any time to make this community a better place for marginalized communities here, but you all don't [bleep] do anything. And I understand you're a weak [bleep] Mayor Go. You can barely do [bleep]. Christian Clegg, you have the ability to make substantial change in this community and recommend it, because all of these idiots will literally, if you opened your [bleep] mouth and said, hey, this is the recommendation of staff, this is what you need to do, they would do it. Specifically, you, let's look at you, Councilman Freeman, who is my [bleep] council member. Bruce Freeman, look at me when I [bleep] talk to you. You're such a [bleep] joke. I hope you understand that, that the Riverwalk Park, when you spoke at the last Bakersfield City Council meeting, and you spoke about the unhoused members there, when you can provide housing to everyone here, you spoke about them like they aren't human beings, and they don't deserve the right to a house.
Ms. Patel.
When we, shut [bleep] up, Karen. I have 45 seconds.
Ms. Patel, Ms. Patel, your comments are welcome, but please consider this a first warning that you have to refrain from shouting.
I am an adult. This isn't shouting. This is very clearly a normal level talking point. And just because I curse, because I'm 25 years old, and I can say whatever [bleep] I want, specifically when my council member talks about unhoused community members at Riverwalk Park in such a [bleep] disgusting way.
Ms. Patel.
That I don't understand how he even can sit in that seat and say that he represents those community members, specifically my city council district. I'm not yelling. I'm saying [bleep] facts, Karen. I have five seconds left, and all of you [bleep] disgust me, even you, Christian.
How are you doing?
I don't [bleep].
Um, how do I request to speak?
Madam Clerk, do we have any other speakers?
That was our last speaker, Mayor.
Uh, that...
Wait a minute. There's one more.
Ethan.
Hi. My name's Ethan Morrison. Maybe you may not recognize me. It's my first time here. I just wanted to talk about the bus transportation issues. I personally don't want a car. I rely on the Get Bus to go everywhere I go. I'm a senior in high school. I moved out of my father's. Do a very abusive relationship. I work three jobs, independent studies, do homework on my own time. And I'm still a senior in high school. I got a, I don't have money to buy a car, so I use the Get Bus to go everywhere I go. So the bus hours is 6:30 in the morning to 6:30 at night, or 6:00 at night currently, which drastically changes my work schedule, my work hours. I can't really work as much as I can to support myself because of that. So that's, I'd really appreciate if you guys just kind of changed those hours. I know a lot of the people in the community are affected very negatively in that way, and the fact that they can't go out at night to go work night shifts or go home from places at night as well. So it very well changes my day and inhibits my actions. So I'm coming up now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morrison. Madam Clerk, do we have any other requests to speak? Any of you who have yellow cards and you would like to speak, would you please bring those to the city clerk?
Hi.
Welcome.
My name is Bridge Stewart. I was just curious, you guys were all elected to represent communities, right, like the people living in communities. But as I'm sure you all are all aware, there's an ordinance right now for 67,000 gas and oil wells to be put in. That's clearly going against the interests of the people and clearly going towards the interests of the big oil and gas companies. I'm just, I'm literally just asking for you to please represent us, and not that, that's it. That's all I wanted to come up here and say, is please represent us. That's what you're there for. And I would appreciate that very much. If you could please, please do that. You will be saving people's lives if you just say, you know what, let's not add more of a problem to the problem we currently have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stewart. Madam Clerk, any others? We're going to need some assistance to lower the mic, please.
Um, Christie.
Thank you very much.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I thank you for your time today. Welcome, sir. Would you please introduce yourself?
My name is David E. Nod. I am a bus rider. I have been riding with Golden Empire Transit since I was about 13 years old. I am now 50 years old, and this is, this new proposed change put forth by Get is doing nothing but going backwards. Around the year of 2008, we had numbers of meetings, and they met at their office, and we all agreed that late-night service was needed. And they brought the late-night service out, and people that are disabled like myself and other people started depending on that service to get us around town, because not all of us qualified at that time for the Getlet services and the other services they offer. But now they want us to go back to 7:00 to 7:00 on a permanent basis. That's going to hurt their own workforce and the riders that ride. Gets, one of the biggest employers of people in Kern County. But that's not, but, and we're all a family. The drivers and the riders, we all work together, because if it wasn't for the drivers, we wouldn't be able to get around either. And the, you know, the likelihood of everybody being able to get stuff done by 7:00 p.m. at night is it's not feasible. And we've already fought to make these changes to move forward. Now we want to go backwards, and that's not progressive. So if it is totally up to the city council that you block what Golden Empire Transit is wanting to do, then I ask you to please block it for the sake of everybody that depends on their buses. I don't know if Mr. Tanner's had a chance to speak yet, but I know he's fully dependent on the bus. I've been blessed with a van, but I don't always have somebody to drive, drive the van. I do not drive, because I've been dependent on the bus. So please, if it's, if it's totally up to this council to whether Get can do what they want or whether they can serve the public, they need to please block them from keeping the 7:00 to 7:00 service. It's hurting everybody. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Nod. Councilmember Gray.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I agree with you. I think we need more bus service.
That was Councilmember Gray. I don't have you, uh, Councilmember Gray. Sorry.
I'll get back to you.
That's right. That's right. Thank you. I've had many people ask me since we've had some of this outrageous behavior in the council, or why are we putting up with this? And so I just want to go on record tonight saying that we, as a council, do not condone this behavior that we are seeing in our chambers. And we are a city that is honorable. We honor our people.
You're talking.
We honor our constituents, and we are here to serve every member of our community, not just the chosen few. So if you could please put that on record, that we, as a council, do not, as I have talked to others, do not condone this behavior.
Thank you, Councilmember Gray. Councilmember Gonzalez.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Clegg, can you give us an update as to when Get is coming to the council? And before you get there, I just want to make it clear to all those who came up tonight. I'm assuming that you're also speaking with the Get Board as well. They have public meetings with public comments. I'm sure that's the case. But, but I think it's important for us to still convey these comments that we receive tonight to the Get Board as well. But can you tell us when, when Get is to come to the council?
Yeah, thank you, Councilmember, and through the chair. We have actually scheduled Get to come and provide a presentation to City Council at our next meeting, March 17th, is when they're scheduled to come.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Gonzalez. Councilmember Parlier.
Hey, I'm back. So anyway, I agree with you. I think we need more bus service. One of the major stops for Get, one of their major terminals is at Valley Plaza within my area, and I know the mall would like more service, not necessarily less, too. But one of the problems and some of the comments made, unfortunately, this body has no control over Get. Their utility, like Cal Water or PG&E, they have their own board. They make their own rules. We do have two members on their board, and myself and some other council members, I'm sure, are going to carry your comments to Get. But in the end, they make their own rules, but we can definitely encourage that they increase or at least keep current bus services. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Parlier. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
Mayor Go, the next item has actually been pulled from the agenda to allow staff additional time to review the materials provided by the collaborative. That would be item, workshops item 3A, Police Department Community Collaborative. Once again, that item has been pulled from tonight's agenda. So item B is review of chapter 1, 3, 4, and 5 of the council policy and procedure manual. We have received a blue memo with additional changes that has already been provided to council.
Thank you. Mr. Clegg?
Actually, Mayor, I think that's me. And...
Oh, I'm so sorry.
I just need the, there we go. Thank you.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. Councilmember Freeman, before we start that.
Yeah, relating to the prior issue, could we all have a hard copy rather than having to read 64 pages on our computers? I requested that for this meeting, but I haven't received one of the, of the report, so we can read and think about it and be ready for a later presentation. I'd certainly like a hard copy.
Mr. Clegg?
We can do that. Thanks.
For all the council members.
Yeah. For all council members, for everybody. It's easier to make notes and for the old folk, for the old-fashioned guys. I like to feel it and have it. Thank you.
Councilmember Arias.
Yeah, just a quick question. I don't know if we're at a time where we can share with the community. I know that there are folks in the audience who are interested in speaking to that issue. Is there any way that we could mention when that might come up at a future meeting?
That, that time has not been scheduled, Councilmember, through the chair and to the council. We're looking at one of our next meetings, our actual meeting, March 17th. As noted, we have a couple of items with outside presenters that are going to fill up that March 17th meeting, so we're going to look for the next available meeting after that to try and schedule some time.
Thank you. Now, Madam City Attorney for item B.
Thank you, Mayor, council. Well, many of you may remember back in October and November of 2020, former Vice Mayor Parlier asked, asked me to come to you and, and give you an overview of your council procedure and policy manual, which is right here in front of me. And I think everyone, with the exception of the newer council members, Councilmember Arias and Gray, you can, I know we went over this during your orientation, but you can see it's pretty thick. You know, it's, it's a five-ring binder. Many of the policies are antiquated. And so back in October and November, there was particular emphasis placed on chapter 2, because chapter 2 had to do with the council proceedings. And that was the chapter that I shared with you during the orientation that the current council had already adopted and, and got up to speed with. So tonight, this is really the second phase, and there's one more phase coming. You can see here that within that manual, there are nine chapters. And again, each chapter is comprised of resolutions. And depending on which chapter you pick, some of them can have as few as one, and some of them, the one that we're going to go over tonight, chapter 4, has 20 resolutions associated with it. So they vary in size, and the highlighted ones are the ones that we're going to go over tonight, Personnel Administration, Ceremonial Affairs, Fiscal Policies, and Public Safety. I just want you to know that I met with several members of the city staff in order to go over these, because again, many of these are, even though they're resolutions and they have a legal component, many of them, of course, are policy and practical. And they're in the audience tonight. I'm going to do something a little bit different. But after we go through each chapter, if you have a question, I'd like you to ask those members of staff, because they're here tonight. In particular, I would like to call out a special thanks to HR Director Christie Tenter, the mayor, for her review on the ceremonial affairs, as well as Chris Huat. And fiscal Randy McKeegan spent a great deal of time on, on chapter 4. And public safety, Public Works, and Nick Fidler. And I also would like to take this opportunity to introduce you to one of my new members of staff, Legal Secretary Ariana Guzman, who's in the audience. And she's put quite a lot of time and resources into making sure that this is presentable for you tonight. So we're going to start off with chapter 1. Chapter 1 is a fairly slim chapter. It only has two components to it. You can see those in front of you. And the first one is the Fair Employment Program. Again, that was done by the council back in 1976. It was when that program was relatively new. We know now that it's on the books. It's been on the books for some time. Christie Tenter and myself are recommending that you repeal this section. The program is well-integrated into the city functions, and all of the standard documents are on the city website. 1.2, excuse me, has to do with the Retirement Appeals Board. Again, older section. It was adopted by the council in 1974. And the Retirement Appeals Board, again, is actually antiquated, because we are now with CalPERS, and we have what's called an IDR, or an Industrial Disability Retirement Process, which is run, again, through, through Human Resources and the City Attorney's Office and the City Manager's Office. And so we're asking you, if you're so inclined, to go ahead and repeal this section, too. So if there's any, any questions on those two sections, Christie is here tonight. If you have any questions on that, otherwise, I will move on to chapter 3.
I don't see any requests to speak, councilmembers. Go ahead.
So chapter 3 has a little bit more. They have four resolutions. You can see here what they are. And when we move on to the first one, both the mayor and the city manager's office helped with the review of these. The first one is the city flag, the flower, the bird, and the colors. We're obviously not changing anything, but we thought it would be nice to go ahead and update the manual with the relevant pictures. And so you can see the flag there, the city flag on the left. The middle picture is, of course, the city flower, which, for those of you who don't know, that's the Miss Bakersfield camellia. And the bird is the Western robin. And our colors, I hope you're all Notre Dame fans, the number, the colors of the city are blue and gold. And those are never going to be changed, Mayor. 3.2, Sister City Program, obviously we want to keep that. 3.3, the city motto, this is kind of interesting. Do many of you remember the squiggly bee? It used to be on the, it used to be on the... Used to be on the, used to be on the tile here in the, in the restrooms, out in the lobby? Well, that was actually, it, it is currently, it's in your manual, is 3.3. I think that it should be repealed, as does the city manager's office, since you went to all that trouble and you now have your new brand. So we think that that should go. And 3.4, same thing, it's the squiggle. Back then, the council thought that the squiggle ought to be on all of the city public notice hearings that were in the newspaper and, and around City Hall. So the thought process here is to go ahead and repeal those. We did give some thought as to whether or not you wanted to replace it with the new brand. But again, the consensus with staff is that, no, we shouldn't do that. And the reason why is because when we were going through all of the work to do the branding, nobody thought to look in the, in the council policy for the squiggle and anything else. So again, because it's very difficult to cross-reference, and we don't want it to become antiquated, we thought that the best thing would be just to go ahead and repeal 3.3 and 3.4. Again, if there are any questions on that, I'm sure that the city manager and myself can answer any questions. If not, I will move on. I'm gonna skip chapter 4 and go to chapter 5, since it's pretty easy.
There aren't any requests to speak.
So, chapter 5 only has two resolutions associated with it. The first one, some of you have heard of it, probably primarily awards 1 and awards 2. That's the PCNN, the Public Convenience and Necessity License. Again, that is for the city manager to make that determination after consultation with award 1 and award 2 councilmembers, or actually with any of the councilmembers that, that are going forward with those alcohol licenses. Our recommendation is to keep that. And the second one is the one that we think needs to be updated. Public Works, Nick Fidler and Stu Patterson were instrumental in this. This is the current policy for identification and removal of asbestos within the city facilities. What we'd like to do is update it. And you can see here that the update will include that all city facilities will be evaluated on an ongoing basis. Testing sites are gonna be prioritized according to criteria regarding the risk to employees and sites scheduled for construction or remodel. Based on those test results, a site-specific mitigation plan will be formulated, and that those mitigation measures will be undertaken based upon risk to both employees as well as the public. And those are the, that's the only change that we're making to chapter 5. And Mr. Fidler is here, if you have any questions on that.
There are no requests on this item.
So, we save the best for last. Chapter 4, just to kinda give you an idea on chapter 4, it's the largest chapter within the nine-chapter manual. When you went through chapter 2, chapter 2, if you recall, had 17 chapters, and you were able to reduce it down to eight. Chapter 4, as you can see, has 20 chapters. And we're hoping after tonight, and you adopt the relevant resolutions, we're hoping that we can get it down to 12. Rather than go through each of the 20, what we decided to do, because of the length of time, I just highlighted the specific resolutions that staff, primarily Mr. McKeegan, is hoping that you will consider repealing and/or updating. So the ones that are not highlighted in front of you, those are the ones that are going to stay the same. So the first one that we're gonna start with is the land-based financing policy. You know, back in the day, the city used to help a developer or an applicant when they were financing for their community facility districts and their assessments districts. We no longer do that for, for a variety of reasons, so we're recommending that 4.1 be repealed. 4.7, again, relatively old, not too old, but was back in 1997. It's kinda funny, but, but back then, there was the thought process that when our IT department went out and they tried to get a maintenance or a license agreement for their computers, that you would have to bid. And it's very clear now that those types of agreements, they're professional in nature. And code, our state code, does not, doesn't require us to bid those specific professional services. This resolution that was put on the books back in 1997 basically said exactly what I just told you. Again, our thought is to go ahead and repeal that, because it's second nature to us now. It's, it's amazing what, you know, what 13 years will do. But it's pretty clear now that those agreements are not subject to the bidding policy, and so we're recommending that you repeal that. 4.8, the budget process. As you all know, the charter and the code require the council and require the city manager to present and for you to approve a budget before July 1st of every year. This particular resolution was put on the books back in 1997. And this is the one, you know, sometimes you ask, well, why did the department heads come in a couple of months before the hearing, before the budget process? And they always give the, they always give our presentation about what the budget is, and you generally have lunch, you know, it starts, it starts at 12 o'clock? Well, that's where this is. It's, it's under 4.8. And that was the process that was established by the previous city manager and the previous council years ago. Our thought process is, there's really no reason for that. I mean, council and city managements change over time, they evolve. Maybe you don't want that this year. I've heard some of you say that it's really not necessary. You may want a different presentation. So the key points, meaning that you need to be presented with a budget and you need to adopt a budget, that's already in the charter and the code. But the presentation of that really should be within the discretion of the city manager and consultation with the, with the vice mayor and the rest of the council. So we're recommending that 4.8 be repealed. 4.9 has to do with investment terms. And as you can see, that was a resolution that authorized staff, primarily finance, to go ahead and make investments with terms longer than five years. According to Mr. McKeegan, this resolution is amended from time to time. It evolves. And again, that whole issue with cross-referencing, that resolution has actually been amended over the years, and none of the amendments have ever made it into this binder. So again, the recommendation to you is that you go ahead and repeal 4.9. 4.10 is the park maintenance and street landscaping. That's just really a simple, a simple change. We had Exhibit A, which had the tier sheet. You know, every time a, a development comes in, they're put in a specific tier for landscaping. That tier that was attached as Exhibit A to 4.10 has been antiquated. And again, it was, it always comes to you as part of the budget process every year. So both the rec and parks and finance are recommending that that particular chapter 4.10 be updated and that we eliminate Exhibit A. 4.11, the audit reporting practices. Not too long ago, it used to be, I guess it used to be the thing that cities needed to change their auditor every five years. That is no longer the common standard and practice in the industry, so we're recommending that you repeal 4.11. 4.13, the voluntary curbside, this is the blue cart. Again, back in the day, the blue cart was a voluntary system. And so the council and the city manager's office wanted to provide incentives for people to go ahead and use the blue carts. As you all know, it's no longer voluntary, it's mandatory. So this resolution is clearly outdated, and we're recommending that you repeal 4.13. 4.15, a little bit more explanation here. 4.15 is called the Cash Basis Reserve Fund, and, and it does exactly what it, what it says it is. It basically establishes a reserve fund for cash. We're asking that you adopt a new one, and you already did, actually, in 2019. You adopted a new resolution, and again, nobody knew about the cash reserve fund in this particular binder. So what we'd like to do is adopt a new resolution, and instead of calling it the Cash Reserve Fund, we wanna rename it the Cash and Facility Replacement Fund. That was the exact name of the resolution that council adopted in 2019. And then what we wanna do, again, if you're so inclined, when I bring this back to you on March 17th, we wanna amend that resolution in 2019, and we wanna put, when you say now, therefore, the above recitals are true and correct, we wanna add a number at the bottom, and we wanna say that this Cash and Facilities Replacement Fund resolution should go into this binder, and it should be marked 4.15. So we have a cross-reference. So the next time finance or the council, when you go to, when you go to that particular resolution of 2019, you're gonna know that, hey, it's in here, and if you're gonna amend that resolution, you need to amend the one in the, you need to amend the one in the binder. And just for your recollection, this is what the 2019 resolution that you passed, this is what it says. It establishes the class, Cash Reserve and Facility Replacement Plan, and it meets the 60-day standard. So that brings us to 4.17. And I know some of you remember, this has to do with the, what the policy is of the council and staff when they receive requests from nonprofit groups, primarily during the CDBG budget process. We had this in chapter 2. So it was in chapter 2, and it was in chapter 4. And when we tweaked chapter 2, we moved it to 4.20. And so it's no longer in chapter 2. It is now 4.20. And it's also 4.17. So this is a duplicate, and we're asking you to repeal 4.17, because the updated one is already in 4.20. 4.19, the debt management policy. Again, all we're doing there is asking you to update Exhibit A, which the council passed in 2017, and that's your current debt management policy. And by the way, that's also been reviewed by outside bond counsel, according to Mr. McKeegan. So that's all that I have on 4. That's a lot of information. Randy is here. Do any of you have any, any questions on 4? There's just some miscellaneous items that I'd like to talk to you about before, before we get there.
Madam City Attorney, there are no requests to speak on that.
Okay. What I wanted to do now is talk to you about just one small addition, if you're so inclined, to chapter 2. And I think, I know one of you had a referral, I'm not sure if it was Councilmember Parlier or the vice mayor, but the government code, state law, was changed early this year in January of 2021. And as you can see from the powerpoint there, it basically established a default contribution, campaign contribution on local offices. And originally, we thought this was, this could be a cleanup, and we could just pass a resolution to go ahead and establish what I'm referring to as a no campaign contribution limit. We thought it would be a cleanup, but I don't have any cleanups that are ready to come before you. So my thought was to go ahead and include a resolution, again, if you're so inclined, for March 17th. And what it would basically say would be in this binder, it would be under 2.13, and it would establish a no campaign contribution limit for anyone that's running for a city office, which would be city council. And that would be, that would be my recommendation for, for where it should go. I'm certainly open to any questions if you have on that.
There aren't any requests to speak. I thought that something had to be enacted before a certain date, or we felt...
No, we're okay.
We're okay?
Yeah, we looked at that. As long as you have something, you have to have it adopted before your election, but as long as you have something like that, you're, you're good to go.
Thank you. Okay, there are no requests to speak on that item.
Okay. So in summary, almost done here. Basically, what we're looking at, again, if there are no objections, there's 12 resolutions which are suggesting repeals, and you can see where they are in the various chapters. There are gonna be five resolutions. And again, those 12 resolutions and the five resolutions, they would be coming back to you on March 17th for the one and only reading, and they would be on the consent calendar. And if you go ahead and you pass those, what you're gonna be looking at is, the prologue is finished, and then chapters 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 will be complete. And the only remaining chapters, which will be in phase 3, would be 6, 7, 8, and 9. They are not as, again, that should be fairly easy to cover, and I'll be able to bring those back to you, probably in, in a couple of meetings or so around May or June. And so with that, you're, I'm open for questions. Staff is here. Your options tonight, you can simply receive and file it, but preferably, you will, someone will make a motion and direct that the changes suggested to you tonight be made, and that we return with those appropriate resolutions. And if you have any other suggestions or additions, please let me know. Thank you.
Ms. Mayor.
I am moved and direct all changes be made and return with resolutions.
Thank you. You have a motion? Please cast your votes. And now you are actually casting them on your screens.
Hey, Mayor, I had a request to speak. I don't know if you saw it or not.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Parlier.
Real quick, Jenny, I just wanna thank you so much for doing this. When I was vice mayor, I thought it was important that we dust off some of the binders and take a look at things that don't apply anymore, or other changes that have occurred. And again, I appreciate you doing this.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to commend you similarly. I saw the process being very well-thought-out. This went so quickly today because of many, many hours of work that have preceded that, and I had personal experience of receiving things in a very timely manner. So thank you for the efficiency there.
Motion is unanimously approved.
Thank you. Next item, please. Yeah. So we are adjournment. So seeing that there is no more business, we stand adjourned at 4:15.